Thank you. Board members, may we have a motion, please, to move on to executive session?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We do have a change in the agenda. It'll be under Board Business, number one, new business, letter C, restoration of an equal opportunity resolution. Are there any other noted changes? May we have a motion, please, to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Okay, motion stands. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education at this time. We ask that any comments be brief, no longer than five minutes, and related to school matters. Personal matters, whether directly or indirectly, will not be discussed in public. Personnel concerns can be addressed in writing to the Board. With that being said, would anyone like to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Lorenzo, welcome. Tell us about the opening days at Thomas.
Uh, opening day was great. Hello. Good evening, Board members. It is such an honor to be back presenting to you all for the third year in a row. It's been a great opportunity and I thank you all for it. Again, Mary Charlton is joining me as co liaison, but she couldn't be here tonight because of three APs and many other commitments. So, um, Mary and I would like to congratulate Superintendent Kamina on his recent appointment to interim superintendent of Webster Schools. We look forward to working with you in the future, and if there's anything we can do to assist you in your transition, feel free to ask. Our student and faculty are feeling the heat as this school year kicks off. Webster Thomas' athletes have already began their seasons, and they're hard at work preparing for a great year, hopefully full of proud victories. Our football team has their first game this Friday at Victor. The game will begin at seven, and we invite you all to come out and support the Titans with us. The girls tennis team is playing their first match today against Brighton. We hope the team had a great opening match. The boys varsity soccer team is also playing their third game today. Their current record is one and one, and we hope they continue on to have a great season. But sports aren't the only thing starting up quickly at Webster Thomas. The fall play, Arsenic and Old Lace, is holding auditions on September eighth and ninth, and the production of the show will begin shortly after that. We look forward to seeing this fall drama come alive at Webster Thomas. The school year started off, and it's been quite humid, but I truly think that all the students, staff, and faculty are excited to be back inside of Webster Thomas. If there's any questions I can answer for the Board at this time, I'd be happy to do so.
Will we get to see you on stage again?
Uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to doing a sweet charity this year at Webster Thomas, which will be around late March.
Very good. Lindsay, welcome.
Hi.
Maria, hello.
Good evening, I'm Lindsay. Over the summer, a few exciting things happened to students. Senior, well, now senior, Kyle Zhao, brought home a first place trophy after competing at a national conference for youth interested in business. He was among 10,000 youths where they participated in workshops and networked. And sophomore Maggie Thorpe traveled to Africa this summer, dedicating her time to teaching underprivileged children and expanding her knowledge in different cultures. At only 15, she's already traveled to many countries. She's gone to Germany, France, Swit- Switzerland, and Ghana. And she went to Ghana as a part of the Council of International Educational Exchange. Graduated senior Emmett Holt accepted a scholarship from the Indiana University Husiers, um, which is one of the most famous teams in college basketball. And to start off the school year, we had the freshman orientation. This year's was the highest percentage of freshman participation compared to the other classes, and the freshmen are beginning to know their way around the school pretty well.
Hi, my name's Maria Christodoulou. Juniors Irem Risan, Olif Risan, and Katie Ramsey won finalist awards in the Anne Rann Anthem essay contest and won $50 each for an essay about Rann's novella. Um, English teacher Susan Woodward wrote an article called "We're All in Myth Together" about the work she has done with her English nine enriched students. Uh, the article is being published in the winter 2014 issue of Jung Journal Culture and Psych, which is an international hard copy and also available online. Uh, with all this said, Schrader is looking forward to a successful new school year. Thank you, and are there any questions?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay did mention the link and web. Excellent. Um, I caught a little bit of it this year. Great, great, great job. So tell your link crew, your web crew people, terrific job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our liaisons to the Board. And we have, I know we have both WTA and P- PTSA? Okay. Whoever wants to go first?
Good evening, School Board.
Hello, Lisa.
And, uh, welcome, Mr. Kamina, in your interim role. Um, excuse me. The 2014-2015 school year's begun, and there's only 182 days more until summer vacation. In all seriousness, in the days to come, the students will be experiencing interactive, multi-dimensional learning enriched with field trips, Washington trip, school cultural arts activities, concerts, and sports. Teachers have been excitedly greeting their students as they begin this school year and eager to take each student to a higher level in their skills, abilities, and knowledge. This year's kickoff theme is gratitude and kindness. I would like to share two quotes that captivate this year's themes. Those who make compassion an essential part of their lives find the joy of life. Kindness deepens the spirit and produces rewards that cannot be completely explained in words. It's an experience more powerful than words. To become acquainted with kindness, one must be prepared to learn new things, feel new feelings. Kindness is more than a philosophic, philos- philos- uh, sorry, philosophy of the mind. It is the philosophy of spirit. Cultivate the habit of being grateful for every good thing that comes to you and to give thanks continuously. And because all things have contributed to advancement, you should include all things in your grat- gratitude. What an appropriate theme for this year's school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And Chris from our PTSA.
Good evening. Good evening, Carm and Board members. My name is Chris Canessa, and I am co president of the Webster Central PTSA. The PTSA would like to welcome Carm as the interim superintendent, and thank you for your presentation at our PTSA meeting last night. We had a great opening meeting with a large attendance and many new faces eager to get started with the school, with the school year at each of the 11 buildings. Our main fundraiser is for, is the sale of calendars. Our calendar this year features color artwork that showcases Caleb Woloschko of Webster Schrader in the winter scene and Scott St. George of Thomas with his trumpet scene. Our calendar, our memberships and calendars are being sold this year as a package, one calendar and one single membership at each of the schools and Hagonhorns for $10. The calendar is only sold in one size. Why join PTSA? Webster Central PTSA is a member of the National PTA, the largest volunteer parent organization in the United States. PTA has prided itself on being a powerful voice of children, a resource for parents, and a strong advocate for public education. We are a group of parents, teachers, students, and community members with common goals to provide programs that benefit all children in our community. Our Webster Central PTSA is committed to sa- the safety, well-being, and education of all children. One of our focuses this year of PTSA will be family engagement and ways to get more families involved in the schools. We look forward to a fantastic year with all, with all our 11 buildings, staff, Carm, and the Board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
We just lost your mic there for a second, if you wondered why we were... Well, at the end of last school year, a fifth grader at each of our elementary schools received an award based upon citizenship. And this is sponsored by our Retired Educators Association, and tonight we collectively will recognize those recipients. So it's usually Craig or Dennis. It's Craig? So come on up, Craig. Please introduce us to our honored guest.
I still remember names.
You'll help me with these, right?
Um, representing our committee here tonight is Deb Beckman-Hein, Danny Kuhn, and Jack Gango is in the back.
Craig, can you make sure that your mic is on?
Oh, it's green. Is that a little closer to it? Okay, good, okay. I'd like to thank Carm and for continuing this award and mic. Thank you very much. And also with a lot of help from Cindy and Jen Callis, who did these write-ups for us, which were great, so appreciate it. Um, this is, we're entering the 12th year of this award, and it's pretty much been the same committee throughout, and we're very happy that Deb joined us this year. So new blood is always good, so whatever. And I think we'll go by school and introduce each student, starting with DeWitt Road.
Okay. From DeWitt Road School, Hannah Rich. Hannah demonstrates positive leadership skills, perseverance in the classroom, and has the willingness to help others in need of assistance. She is involved with school safety patrol, chorus, and band. In the community, she is active in her church, where she is a member of the junior choir. She is also involved in a charity to help a young girl fighting cancer. She is active in karate and participates in fundraising efforts with infectious energy that motivates others. Hannah, congratulations.
Nice job, Hannah. That's great.
Next from Clem North would be Keeler Thomas. Keeler embodies the characteristics of politeness, humility, caring, and thoughtfulness. He exhibits leadership skills beyond his age while being a true team player. He is willing to step back to allow others to take the credit. It is his natural innocent personality that makes him a true citizenship winner. He is in the school band and chorus and helps out wherever there is a need. He plays basketball and baseball and volunteers at his church. Congratulations, Keeler.
Sydney Smith, Plank South.
Can we have Sid, maybe have Cindy come up and stand next to you, Dennis? That'd be great. Sure, you can come over here.
Sydney devotes each day to helping others. She is always on the lookout for those who need a helping hand and with a smile jumps right in without needing to be asked. She is supportive, diplomatic, and nonjudgmental. Sydney is active in the community as a Girl Scout and participated in a cookie sale to help raise money for US troops. In school, she has helped parents with a plant sale and pitched in at moments, at a moment's notice to help the school postal service. Congratulations, Sydney.
Ethan. Ethan Ruller. Ethan, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Yes.
Come on up. Ethan has consistently and enthusiastically shown strong qualities in service, scholarship, leadership, and sportsmanship. He is a hard worker and role model to others, as he always puts forth his best efforts. He demonstrates empathy in the classroom and naturally strives to include others and not take away from anyone. He is courteous and respectful in and out of the classroom. Besides his strong academics, he is in E Kids Band, intermurals, and an after-school reading club. Outside of school, he is involved with lacrosse teams as well as basketball and football programs. Congratulations, Ethan.
Next is Jason Lisiandro, Plank North. I hope I got that right. Jason is reliable, responsible, respectful, and extremely kind to his peers and teachers. He is academic leader in the classroom, bringing with him new ideas. Other students looked up to him. Jason has involved in many school activities, including band, school safety, and Odyssey of the Mines. He also took part in the Battle of the Books, reading the material numerous times, including himself and his teammates to ensure everyone understood the stories. Outside of school, he completed a fundraiser to support Wilmont Cancer Center, has volunteered for Community Arts Day, is a Boy Scout, and enjoys bowling and karate. Congratulations, Jason.
Olivia Scott, Clem South.
Olivia is active in the community, playing lacrosse for Webster and Common Goal. In school, she participates in student council, chorus, and safety patrol. She does her work every day with 100% effort and corrects papers until they are perfect. She is trustworthy, kind, dependable, and the one other students want in their group because they know she will give her all while treating everyone with respect and kindness. Congratulations, Olivia.
And from State Road School, Samantha Calery. Samantha is honest, determined, committed, and always trying her best. Other students love to be around her because of her positive attitude and accepting personality. She demonstrates energy that motivates others to be the best they can be. She gives every task her best effort, whether it is learning something new, playing her instrument in band, or being a leader. Samantha was a member of the Eagle Express Post Office, Safety Patrol, a K Kids official, track and field day captain, and care ambassador. Congratulations, Samantha.
I would like to add that immediately after, um, I guess our ceremony is completed, we will be going down to the East Cafeteria on the bottom floor for a little reception, and kids can talk with each other and parents can also. So thank you to the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know, they're gonna have their cake and, yeah, the two.
We'll give people a few minutes to mosey out before we... Hey, Cam, did you realize all but one was taller than you? Okay. Lester from whatever. All right. We now move into a construction update and a status report of our project dealing with the roofing of buildings and other various works being done to those buildings. So Jim, could you give us a little update on that?
Yep. You should have a couple slides in front of you, and I know Paul is putting it up on the screen, but I just wanted to give you a little status report tonight and talk to you a little bit about a future meeting. So at, one of the last board meetings, the Board did approve the contracts for the architect, and you'll be hearing the name SEI Architects. That is the architect who's designing the project for us. You'll also be hearing the name of our construction manager, which is Campus Construction Management, and they'll be helping us with keeping us on track, making sure we're on budget during that design phase and submission to the state. And then they'll be working with our staff and working with the contractors that will be doing the work once the project is underway, and they're really our eyes and ears of the project. They will be managing to make sure that the project stays on time and is performed in the way that the architects have drawn it. Um, we have a construction team, and we've met three times. Um, the, the construction team is made up of myself, Blaine Cunningham, and Tony DeGravio from Buildings and Grounds, Vic Thomaselli, and Brad Mor- Morland from SEI, and they'll be the designers, and from campus, Tom Sexton, Marcus Pizzito, and Kevin Clark form the management team. We meet, we've been meeting every two to three weeks. Um, we've had, have developed a tentative schedule, and I'll share that with you in a minute. Um, you may have seen it in the minutes, as I've sent out the minutes of our meetings. We just met yesterday, so soon you'll get the number, the number three of our meetings. As the architect continues to design the project, the construction manager really is helping us perform the estimating of what this project will cost as it's designed, and that will keep us within budget. And prior to, um, submission to SED, we'll have some good solid numbers on what the construction manager thinks. Bids will come in when we go out for bid of this project. When we think of bidding this project, it's a major piece of our discussions because, as you know, we're gonna be touching all 11 of our buildings, and that is a large area to think about. And we've been wrestling with one contract or two contract, and we'll be putting together pros and cons of each one, and then we'll come back later in the process before we submit it, or actually before we even bid it, to make that final determination. And just as you think about that, Schrader is one of the buildings over 360,000 square feet. You have three elementary schools that the entire roof is gonna be put on. When you start packaging them in one and you think about the size of the project, you start to limit yourself on the contractors who might be able to do that work versus splitting it up and having two contractors. And a lot of that comes with contractors having to bond the project, and do they have enough capacity to be able to bond it? There are some large enough to do it. There are some secondary or smaller ones who will be great at doing one or the other projects. So we'll continue to, um, to look at that, and the thing that we wanna assure is that we get the best possible competitive pricing on this project. As we focus on that, and that's the traditional bidding model, we also have had discussions about, um, using US communities to purchase the materials and secure the labor. And that's, um, we can, uh, that's a, um, and Tom has been graciously working with, through state school boards. This is a national company. You can buy product from them at, um, set prices, kind of like, um, what we do with, with contracts that we have now for county contracts and, and things like that. Um, the one thing that we're wrestling with right now is buy the product, but then how do we get the labor portion of it done? Can, who do they secure? And one of the things that we know is what happens after this project's done? If we get labor from Indiana and we have a problem, how do we get them out here to fix that problem? So those are the things we're looking at. We're meeting with them. We're, they've been in existence maybe about eight months, so it's fairly new. For roofing products, they only have one product, um, and that's fine, but it's a, it's a very reputable product, but we just wanna make sure that we, you, we will look at using both the traditional bidding and, and them, just to make sure we get the best prices available. All the other work in the project, and there's a lot of repointing of outside brickwork, some tile work, all of that will be done in what we'll call Phase Two, which will start about a month or two later. We'll have one bid, one contractor for that part of the project. Again, the project is in, in budget as, as of our last meeting yesterday. We'll be meeting again on the 24th of September, and at that meeting, um, we wanna try to finalize some type of presentation to the Board where we can bring the architect and the construction manager and the, and the district team together with the Board. You can hear from them where we are, how we're looking at things, what's gonna happen before we actually submit it to SED. The submission date with SED is the beginning of November. So, um, in meeting with Mike and Sue, one of the things that we talked about, um, a couple weeks ago was, there's a meeting on October 9th if the Board wishes to have this workshop. Um, I did talk to the construction team, and they are available. About an hour for this portion is what we thought, maybe 20-minute presentation or so, and then questions, half an hour and 30 minutes, 30 minutes, as long as the Board is, um, already has that schedule. If that is, uh, works for them, that would be something that we could, we could do. In the last page, you'll see the, the roofing and all of the work schedule. And right now, we're in that design phase, and that's primarily the architect who's doing it. They just started to do some of the other work, um, design, but the roofing design will be done by the end of October. We'll be looking to submit it by, in early November or on the 1st of November. We're expecting, because of the nature of the work, because it's just roofs, that the approval will come fairly quickly. Uh, we have about three months built in, and as long as we get approval by the end of January, that'll allow us to advertise the bid in February and award contracts in March. Um, if we're able to do this, we'll be ahead of a lot of others, so we believe we'll get some very competitive. It's prime time to, to get on board with, with these before contractors get booked up for the summer. And that project between May and October would be done. Um, the, the, most of the, the hard labor roofing will be done during the July and August timeframe, but there'll be some touch-up stuff and some preparing that happens in May and then again in, in September and October. The other work, um, on the other side, as I said, the design phase is about a month behind. It'll be done sometime in November for submission in December. We expect that this may take a little bit longer because there's multiple types of work in this project. So by March, our hope is to get approval, bid it in April, and then award contracts and at the middle of May. May, which will be just in time for contractors to start late June or early July. And a lot of this work can happen while school's in session. Contractors either work evenings or work outside in areas that there are no kids near.
So entertaining any questions or thoughts the board might have at this time?
Board members, we already have a scheduled workshop on October 9th, so let's, we won't tentatively, we will put it in there. That will add the architect and construction manager to that, that date. Thank you, Jim.
All right, Karen, your first superintendent's report.
Thanks, Mike. So it is both a pleasure and an honor to begin my first interim superintendent's report to the Board of Ed with an overview of what opening day looks like in Webster. I wanted to share some pictures taken this week by Jen Callis that show some of the nearly 9,000 reasons that make our jobs so enjoyable. There's no better sound to me, and I'm sure I speak for all of my colleagues, than the voices and the laughter of our kids, and you can't beat these smiling faces. And that one little girl in the top middle in the blue, in the blue dress with the bow is just, just adorable. I've been making my way to all 11 schools throughout the first week, and it has been a memorable experience. And the schools are literally buzzing with excitement, and the energy in our schools is infectious. Our students and our teachers are certainly ready for a new year, and, you know, one of the, one of the neat things for me, yesterday I was on the bus loop, or maybe it was, it might have been Tuesday. I was on the bus loop at Schrader, and it's really neat to go to Schrader because I know a third of the kids from when they were students at State Road. And so these are some of the pictures that some, I saw some of my students from State Road, and the last time I saw many of them, they were in fifth grade or fourth grade, and they were probably a foot shorter. But you can see that they've all, you know, passed me in height, as many of them did in fifth grade as well, but, but still, you know, that one, the two boys in the top left, Matt and John, are just, you know, they're like close to six foot at least. But it was great to see them, and it really is something to go back there to see the kids, when, now that they're 16 and 17 years old, and the last time I saw them, they were like, they were 10. So that was really neat. So our students and teachers are ready for a new year and grateful to be in this district that is filled with so much kindness for each other. And I spoke of that gratitude and kindness during my opening day meeting with the Webster faculty and staff. And if you're interested in experiencing our faculty and staff's enthusiasm during that meeting, it is actually running on the homepage, and is, and you can find the link right on our website, websterschools.org, as well as on our Facebook page. On a personal note, I am extremely grateful for the many teachers who made a difference to me as a Webster student, including Mr. Sefaleto, and for the many students and families that I've had the pleasure of working with over the past 25 years of my career here in Webster, my hometown. So, speaking of gratitude, I wanted to express my thanks to a group of Webster employees who worked throughout Labor Day weekend and continue to work to keep our parents updated on the difficulties that we're having with the computer system at, at the bus garage and through our transportation department. And we had a major systems failure that happened a week and a half ago, and through no, I mean absolutely through no fault of hers, our transportation director, Kitty Rowe, has just been amazing, as well as her team. And before I formally recognize Kitty and her team, as well as many secretaries from up here at District Office, I wanted to give everyone a brief update regarding transportation. We are, our transportation department, again led by Kitty, is communicating directly and daily with the staff of each school and faxing them any updated bus stops and routes to ensure that our students continue to travel to and from school safely. And our telephone system at the transportation department is operational. There were some issues last week with that, with our phone systems as well, and that was fixed over the weekend, and thanks to Frontier, who sent somebody Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday to make sure that everything was working. And they just, the woman was right there just waiting and just making sure that, that if any problems were to arise, that she was there to take care of them. So I remind parents that they have questions or concerns to call 265-3840. And, and again, if, for whatever reason, they, they can't get through, or that the mailbox is filled, and hopefully we have fixed that problem, to send an email to Kitty, or you can send an email to me, and we'll make sure that your concern gets answered. So, I, parents, thank you again for your continued patience, understanding, and kindness as we work to ensure that every student has a safe and enjoyable the opening week of school. And as I mentioned earlier, I want to express my gratitude to a few people who have been working behind the scenes throughout the holiday weekend to ensure parents' questions got answered as best as we could and our students' needs were met. This group of people really did go above and beyond for our students, and I'd like to recognize and thank them for just that, going above and beyond what their job description may look like on paper, all to be sure that the needs of our kids were met. So I'm going to ask that the following people come on up. We have some, I do have a certificate for them, for going above and beyond. So Kitty, Kitty Rowe, our transportation director, and Abby Buddington. Kim Landsafame, Chris Butagi. As well as Jay Gargana, Peg Weedman, Susan Simaldo, Bill Blitz, Glenna Blitz. I'd like those guys come on up before I read the next list of a few. And last, but not least, Tom Garen, Henry Herbst, Carol Engel, Pam Booth, Jim Van Neil, and Kathy Wojahowski. We couldn't have started school with, with the buses running as well as they were without the efforts that all of you put in over the last few days. And I thank you, and I know the board thanks you, and the principals thank you for all that you've done. So again, thank you very much for coming out tonight.
The board does echo those comments, Karen.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, and lastly, parents of first through fifth graders, just a quick reminder for you on a new initiative in our seven elementary schools this year. There will be two conferences and two report cards this year for elementary school families, which is different than a year's past. We used to have four report cards and one parent conference. So now this year we're doing two and two. Our teachers and families played an integral, an integral role in making this change. It will allow parents to have two opportunities during the year to check in on their students' progress with a face-to-face teacher meeting. Watch our website, websterschools.org, for a video explaining more about the new conference and report schedule in the next week. I want to close my report by reminding parents of the many ways in which our district communicates with you and our community and our families. Communication is key in any relationship, particularly the one between our school district and our parents and the community. It is important that we stay connected with all of you, so be sure to check out our website, our Facebook page, our YouTube channel, and follow us on Twitter. I look forward to a great school year working together with your children for your children. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. All right, we'll move into new board business. Last May, the voters of the Webster Central School District authorized the district to borrow $1,400,000 to purchase new school buses. The bond is now ready for our approval. This does require a roll call vote?
Yes.
Are there any questions before we take that vote? Cindy, go right ahead.
Paul?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll move on now to our revenue and expense report. Jim?
Thank you, Mike. You have both the revenue and expense report for the completed year of June 30th, 2014. If you turn to the last page of the revenue report, you will see that at the end of the year, we had $2.7 million in excess revenue. That, those funds were used to make up the appropriated fund balance. As you know, we allocate $5.5 million each year to our budget as what's called the appropriated fund balance. That comes from excess revenue or unexpended budget. A big part of this, about $1 million, in the area state aid was planned, as we used it from our kindergarten aid that we received during '13, '14 for, to offset our appropriated fund balance in '15, '16. On our expense side, we ended up with about $4.3 million unexpended in our budget. Again, our encumbrances, and you look at the last page, in '13, '14, we're $3,200,000. We ended the '13, '14 year at $3,177,000. So our encumbrances from one year, and those encumbrances are what rolls over from one year's budget to the next for purchases that were made but not paid for as we, we purchased things for the following school year. So that $2.7 and the $3,400,000, as I said, $5.5 million went towards the appropriated fund balance, and then during the tax rate setting time, the board will remember that we put money in our reserves. That's where the difference, that $1.5 million came from. And that was $1 million into capital and $500,000 into the tax cert reserve. Go back and remember. So we ended the year very well.
Thank you. Any questions for Jim? May we have a motion then to accept the revenue and expense report, please? Second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. We have in front of us a resolution. It reads, it is resolved that the board hereby approve the agreement of dispose of pending equal opportunity, opportunity charges, numbers 525-2013-00435 and 525-2013-00749, and authorizes the interim superintendent to execute the same. May I have a motion for that, please? Thank you. Second, Paul? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Now, the school year just began, but I'm wondering if there are any liaison reports at this point.
For Schlegel Road, there's a couple upcoming events. On Friday is the Patriot Party with a movie to follow. Starts at 5 o'clock, I believe, on Friday, and the first PTSA meeting is Tuesday night, and as always, there's free babysitting.
Sue, are you going to that one?
Yes.
Okay. On Wednesday, Clem North PTSA has a meeting. You're going to go to that one. The following Monday, DeWitt has a PTSA meeting. Can anyone here make that? It's on the 15th. All right, so the 15th is uncovered. We'll
We'll work on that.
We'll make sure that gets covered. And then on the 22nd, Plank South PTSA has a meeting. Can anyone make that?
I can make that. The 22nd?
Yeah.
So Monday nights?
Yeah.
I can do that one.
You can do that one? Okay, so we've got every PTSA meeting in the next two weeks covered, with the exception of DeWitt, and we'll get that one covered. Okay. Sue, do you want me or you to do steering?
I'm, I can do it. We had our steering meeting two weeks ago, Wednesday. Steering is part of Monroe County School Board Association, and we talked about the goals for the year that are going to be recommended to the executive committee. They're looking to do a member survey, which one hasn't been done since '96, I'm thinking? 2000, was it 2000? Oh, sorry. Okay. 2004. So anyway, they want to get a good idea of what the characteristics are of the current school board members. And also, they're going to be working on restoration of full funding for education, which is, I think, going to be pretty consistent through all the committees of Monroe County School Board.
Thank you, Sue. Ann or Tom?
Yes, we had our first legislative committee meeting yesterday, and the group identified a number of priorities settling on three to do a fair amount of focus on, one being the full restoration of funding for public education, which includes GEA but is not exclusive because it is the deficiency of the model that is the issue in addition to the lack of money through GEA. The other two areas that will take attention and time, one is on the full impact of the veterans exemption. As you'll recall, that was an issue we began to address last year. And then also nutritional guidelines that are a concern of many school districts, that nutritional needs of the students are not being met currently. There were a few other areas identified, but those will be the top three.
Thank you, Ann. This coming Wednesday, the Information Sharing Committee will be meeting. The topic of discussion will be special education cost drivers. The Director of Pupil Services from Churchville Child, I will be leading the presentation. So if you're interested in attending, let Cindy know. Tom, do you have anything from New York State?
Yeah, there's a couple of things going on in New York State. It was recently announced that David Little, Government Relations Director, will be retiring from New York State School Boards Association and the state, basically. And then he's becoming the Executive Director of the Rural Schools Association. So they'll have some good representation and good leadership there to fight the fight for rural schools. We also have some changes at New York State School Boards. Rita Lashway, who was the Deputy Executive Director, is retired as of August 1st. And the new Deputy Director and General Counsel will be Jay Rorona. Jay has accepted that, that additional workload along with Robert Schneider, who will be the Chief Financial Officer. So they kind of split the duties that Rita used to handle. And we'll be having our first board meeting this coming weekend down in Albany. Thank you.
Find out if you can be our delegate.
There were, I did check with Jay, and there's nothing legally against me being a delegate, except when I, it's, it wouldn't look right, me voting on some of the fiduciary requirements that require a vote when I'm the treasurer of the organization.
We'll figure something out.
You know, we have to add the discussion of the resolutions to our board agendas, which
Yeah, I think there were 16 items, 16 or 17 items.
That's not too bad.
No, and there was
We can pass them in at the 18th.
I was going to say, yeah, resolution discussion.
Because we can do them relatively
They're online, by the way, so you can read them online in just the font.
And, you know, we'll be able to tell if there's anything really controversial. And if there is, then we got to figure out a way to send somebody.
Several, several of them were renewals of sunsetting positions that we don't want to have leave the legislative book.
Right.
That we present each year to the legislature.
Okay. All right, so that's on the 18th.
All right.
Cindy, you're taking these notes.
Cindy, you're taking these notes, too.
I do have one other question, and we did, I brought it up at the Monroe County, at the legislative meeting, and it was based on an article that was in the last onboard newspaper.
Oh, the Levers?
Yeah, the Cuomo signs the last lever voting machine extension. So what they're saying is that, you know, this coming year, we'll be able to use the lever machines, but then the next one, we won't be able to. We either have to use the electronic ones, or we can use paper ballots. I ain't going to do that. But anyway, do we have somebody who's looking into the financial implications of that?
Yes, we will.
Okay. I don't know how much the county will charge us to rent the machines, you know, so.
We'll work on it.
So, yeah, we should know ahead of time so that if we need to lobby for that, you know, we have time to do it.
I believe two years ago when they started, it was about $6,000.
More than what we pay now?
They'll pay for it now.
Right, so they would charge us, okay. So it's $6,000, so is that, question is, is it worth us lobbying for $6,000? Okay. Thank you.
Jim, where are we with Audit Committee? Do we have a date yet?
Well, the next time the Audit Committee will meet would be when Ray is ready to present. And right now, it could be the 18th, if not October 2nd.
Okay.
And for this part, we'd invite the Audit Committee, as well as the full board, and do the joint Ray presentation before you accept the report.
Okay, thank you.
Is that on a board meeting night?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll plan on a 6 o'clock or...
On what night?
5:30 on one of the two Thursdays.
Okay.
18th and the 2nd.
Okay.
Sue, anything on policy?
We need to set up our first meeting. So it's Ann, Tom, and myself, right? And do we have an administrator who wants to? Any volunteers?
I, yes. I mean, I don't know if there are any volunteers, but there will be one.
Okay. I'm thinking for policy, we probably don't need to start up till the 1st of October-ish. I think we're okay there. Okay.
Sue, we'll have two policies, I think two, that in the business area that you'll have to look at.
Do they, is there a time constraint on that?
No, it can be done one of your first meetings. We'll prepare it all. They'll just be around things that the Audit Committee thought we should have policies on.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sue, you're on for strategic planning.
Yes, we need to get that going again. Summer was a little difficult, and we didn't do the work that we had hoped to do. So from the board, we have Paul, Ann, and myself. So Cindy, can you try to schedule a meeting with the core group? What days work the best? Do you have certain days of the week, or...
Yeah, not Tuesdays.
Not Tuesdays? I don't think that works, anyway. So you want to go Wednesdays? Mondays, Mondays or Wednesdays?
I'll be working out last, did we have attached some meetings, too? Do we attach them like...
We did attach them to board meetings.
The core did.
Before we did.
The core board added them to that.
All right. Why don't we do that?
So maybe we can do it on a Thursday?
Yeah, why don't you try to...
For a meeting, for like an hour.
You're not going to be able to do it on the 18th.
No, it's all right. We'll figure out a...
Yeah. But we do need to get going on that, so the sooner, the better.
Thinking about it.
Yes.
You know, one positive thing, what it's starting at the beginning of the school year, is you might get additional volunteers. You know, over the summer, that wasn't likely.
Right.
But I do believe there might be some community members or parents that are...
Great.
Great, thank you.
Tom, anything from Septa?
No, I have not heard anything yet, but I know Sue and I are on that committee. We want to be involved with that.
Yes, do we know when the first meeting's going to be? Okay. Just keep us informed.
If you keep us informed, we can get it, one of us could try to attend.
No, they don't know either, okay.
Board members, you've had a chance to look at the consent agenda. It consists of the superintendent's recommendations for approval of the minutes of our regular meeting, our personnel actions, our recommendations on the Committee of Special Education, and as well as preschool special education. There is a gift from Plank North PTSA, supporting our cultural arts. There's also bids for bagels and swimming parkas, as well as cooperative bids for pool supplies and gas and diesel and bus parts.
When I first looked at it, it was like beagles. What are we buying beagles for?
May we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please, without buying beagles? Thank you, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Board members, just to call your attention to the fact that we have a meeting on September 18th, it's a regular-based meeting. There is, as we said, information sharing next Wednesday, and actually, you and I are going to a meeting on the 19th, correct? Yes, we are.
Yes.
The Leadership Academy. Okay. Yes, on Friday, 19th. Okay, with that being said, may we have a motion for adjournment, please? Second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.